We need to get moving on this.
We need to get moving on it.
Well, if you want to give them until the 28th of February to apply, staff does not have time to put all of that together and get it on the agenda in time
We can do it earlier.
For the first meeting in March.
We're in the 6th of February. We can, people can decide. I think we can get this done this month.
Yeah, I already have people that have approached me about applying.
Yeah, people are already ready.
They're waiting for this.
Yeah.
So it gets in the, when will it likely hit the paper?
And we can, of course, it would be in the weekly. I'm sure that would generate.
Yes, so if it's in the weekly on Friday, the 8th,
Put it on the website.
And we give them till the 22nd to apply?
The paper, just a couple of days' notice is what's required. So today is the, so it could be in the paper by Friday.
So we gave people to?
We'll run it, we'll go ahead and run it for three days and then give them until the 22nd? That's, that would work better for staff.
Would that allow you to then have it ready for us on the 6th?
Yes.
Okay.
The 22nd.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I think there are probably already people who know who want, that they want to apply.
Mm-hmm.
I'm thinking. Okay. And we're going to do 90 days and...
So we're gonna, it's gonna be fact-finding?
Mm-hmm, fact-finding. And what, what else do you?
The only thing I'm not sure about with the fact-finding is whether or not we just...
They, I would say that some of these-
Have added, or do we need bylaws? We don't, I would say we don't need bylaws for them then.
I would say that we do need some semblance of somebody, they have to have a chair. They need, somebody should be taking, you know, they need to be taking notes and, but somebody's got to run the meeting. They have to have some level of organization. It just isn't a free-for-all. And...
Okay. Then maybe instead of bylaws, we'll call it pickleball committee procedures.
There you go.
Yeah, there you go. There we go.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Let's just make it happen.
And I want to get this done because I think that we, we need, we owe this to our residents. And...
Okay.
Okay.
I think we're good.
I'm working up work.
Yes.
Thank you guys.
Okay, thank you. Event permit. Piece of revival. I feel like I need revival. It looks like the event holders need revival. Okay.
Good afternoon. Lisa Hannon zoning official. Piece of revival, I believe this is the second year they're requesting approval to close the Harbor Walk due to public safety concerns and event cost. Ticket prices range from $45 to $125 for this event. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions: that the event organizer is responsible for a public service announcement for the Harbor Walk closure date and times, and Harbor Walk must be reopened immediately at the end of the event. And the organizers are here if you have any questions.
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
All right, Lynn, Lynn, you spoke up first. I don't see any reason not to approve it. This has happened before. They've had other wonderful events for our city and I recommend approval.
Second.
Officially.
Yes, second officially.
So there-
Oh, you already got a second. Well, then never mind.
We had two seconds.
Yes.
Two seconds.
All right, and the other discussion. There's been a motion in two seconds.
It's approval of the event permit with the conditions.
Yes, yes, correct.
Thank you.
Sorry, I should have been more specific, yes.
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Should all of our things be that simple? Sorry you had to sit here for three to plus hour. But look at how much you learned today, Nick and Matt. Okay, Howard.
Oh my God, I forgot about this. I'm so hungry. You're leaving?
As Kristen is getting ready. This starts the FY 2020 budget process, long-range financial plan. Our finance director is going to go through some slides and we'll get to the budget issues at the end.
So good afternoon. Kristen Simeone, Finance Director, and as Howard mentioned, our long-range plan starts our fiscal year 2020 budget process. Our budget process is a full annual process, but starting on the next year, it starts now. So we kind of go over our fiscal forecasts again, just so everyone knows where we're at. And so it's important to know, well, what are our current assumptions? So for revenues and the general, and we're starting with the general fund. Our avalorum is showing a millage rate of 3.1969 in all five years with a 6% increase per year. Other revenues range anywhere from 0 to 3% estimated increases. We're currently using, as approved by council in the prior fiscal year, budget process 512,000 of operating reserves in fiscal year 2020 to balance. And we have a use of 433,000 for the capital outlay reserve in 2020. And that's for the fire apparatus. Expenditures, we've estimated increases of, I'm so sorry, that should say 3% merit increase, and pensions of 5%, health insurance is at 6%, and workers' compensation 10%. In our budget issues, we bring up the 4%, but in the current pro forma, it's 3%. Operating citywide, estimated increases are 3% except for liability insurance, which is at 5%. And certain special things such as the election expenses, which is 35,000 per year. And we have comprehensive plan studies, which varies based on the specific year and which particular study they're had in the plan. Capital outlay, we try to keep a level funding of 740,000 annual funding. That was based on last year's five-year capital outlay plan. We will update that again this year as part of our process. And that will change what we determine might be the annual funding going forward. Transfers for the drainage program are 500,000 per year, paving program at 459, capital projects 155,000, and for the CRA tax increment financing, it's an estimated 4% increase. So again, we show the pro forma here, and at the bottom are our minimum reserves. And again, following council direction, we have been increasing half a percent per year. So in fiscal year 2020, it's at almost 1.9, at eight and a half percent. We just show it graphically where our revenues are, so you can see that we are still working towards having total revenues equal our total expenditures. So we are showing use of reserves, and we haven't discussed the future years yet, but we're not quite there yet as far as matching those revenues to expenditures. This is our reserve analysis, and again, '19, we were at 8% and in '20, we're showing 8.5%. The graph at the bottom, the dark purple is our minimum reserves, and the bluer part is available reserves over those percentages. The yellow line is the recommended 16.7%, which is two months of operations. We've almost hit that one year, but we're still below it. So for fiscal year 2020, our estimated beginning reserves are about 3.5 million, and that was updated recently, looking at where we ended up fiscal year '18. So we have included that in there to show where we're at now. Less the use of the reserves already budgeted or set aside for fiscal year 2020, and the 8.5% minimum means that you have available for allocation about a little over $1 million. For the capital outlay reserve, we're starting with 440, adding in the additional 740,000. And then the 2020 capital outlay plan means at the end of 2020, you had about $7,000 left in the capital outlay reserve. However, by the end of 2023, you're at 419,000. And again, when we add the next year in, that's when we'll adjust that.
Why does that jump so dramatically?
It depends on the level, we're trying to do an annual funding, and so when you're looking at the five-year plan, it just depends on when those vehicles or equipments are being replaced. Some years have a higher amount that are needed because the cost is a bigger piece of equipment.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions on the general fund? So going forward, I just want to mention that the operating expenditures are pretty much the same for every fund as far as estimates of 3% for general operations and 5% for the general liability insurance. And any other ones, we will talk about separately. So moving on to our CRA fund, the TIF revenue over the whole five years is an estimated 2.5 increases overall. Some years are higher, some are lower. Harrow Court lease revenue, we're projecting fully leased at the time we had put the proforma together. Other leases and loan repayments are per contracts. Expenditures, the debt services per the updated loan schedule. The liability, the facilities maintenance is 45,000 annually for the Harrow Court Center and Lashley Park amenities, 100,000 annually. And again, any of those unused funds are carried over to the next year for any large projects that might be needed in those areas. So here we have the pro forma, and again, it's set up into the three sections of the debt service, which is our current, all of our TIF revenue that comes in can only be used for debt service, so we show the reserve there. If there's a down year or if we can pay the loan off early, the CRA would sunset early. We have our operations for the Harrow Court Center, and then we have our general operations. Any questions on that? Going into utilities funds, currently, there are no rate increases in the five-year proforma. There's estimated about a half percent growth each year. Our current pro forma had included the grant funding of 50% of the full RRO project. We'll talk about that later under the issues. We have water impacts to cover the partial debt service on RRO for part of the growth-related part, portion of the project, and wastewater impacts to reimburse for the Jones Loop project. Other expenses is that in fiscal year '19, 1.25 full-time equivalency units were added for a GIS engineering tech in the admin division, and increased hours of a part-time clerk in wastewater treatment plant. And the only additional operating expenditures outside were for the additional cost of operating the RRO per the project engineer. Capital outlay plan and the capital improvements plan, so in their capital outlay plan, within each division, they just estimate approximately 700,000 per year. And as the year comes up, the divisions will submit their, their plans, and it can change between each division depending on who has the highest needs. We have the RNR, which is the repair and renewal of infrastructure, 1.1 million annually gets transferred to the utilities construction fund. And other transfers for other projects are identified in the five-year plan. The debt services per the schedule, based on our existing state revolving loan fund and the new state revolving loan that is currently in process for our RRO project. We are required to have a one-year payment reserve, and as we're taking draws on the loan, we're increasing those reserves. And so here's the pro forma for utilities. Any questions? And again, this just shows in which years we're having, revenues are exceeding, and in which years we're using reserves as well as building up for other projects. Sanitation fund, the revenues are increasing 60 cents per year specifically for the recycling contract, so it's on the recycling side. There's an estimated 1% growth in single and multifamily revenues only, not in the commercial area. We've held those flat. Financing of equipment is in fiscal year 2022. And again, the only change in operating that's beyond the 3%, was the recycling costs, and that's per contract. For capital, we have our five-year plan, and the capital outlay reserve is depleted in fiscal year 2020. And so in that, 2022, we're using financing to cover the costs at this point. Here's the pro forma. For Pana Gorda Isles Canal Maintenance Fund, we currently have the $650 assessment rate through fiscal year 2022. And then in 2023, it goes back down to the 550. The $100, the increased assessment was for the four years of the debt service related to the city's 12.5% share of expenditures of Hurricane Irma.
Kristen, we had talked when we, when we approved the assessment increase last year for BGI, that it would be a four-year increase.
That's correct.
It was paid in 2018?
No, it just for, it just started fiscal year '19. It went up.
So it starts in 2019? I thought we did-
It started in 2019. You approved it during our '18 budget process, but it was for the fiscal year '19.
Okay, I was thinking-
So in fiscal year '18, the assessment was still 550.
Okay, thank you.
Sewal replacement reserves are used for special projects identified in the five-year And then here is the pro forma. Any other questions? For the Brent Store Isle Canal Maintenance Fund, we have a $460 operating assessment. The $95 dredging assessment rate is scheduled to go through fiscal year 2021. And as you'll recall, it had been, it was going to go through 2022, but because the project came in under budget last year during our budget process, we were able to take off a year for that. They are still keeping the $95 tentatively in there for '22 and '23, and that's because they have some projects still in their plan without cost estimates. Sewal replacement reserves, again, are used for special projects identified in the five-year plan. And there's their pro forma. Lashley Park Marina Fund, revenues are, estimated increases are 0 to 1% on the different line items. Again, we put in the grant revenue for most of the pump-out boat operations, so between the two different grants, we can usually cover most of the operations. Expenses, additional funds for dredging and maintenance of floating docks and mooring fields are scheduled annually, and our capital has an equipment replacement per the five-year The Building Fund, we estimated permit revenues at 863,500 per year. Other revenues were 80,000 per year. Interest revenue was based on average reserves. Expenses, other than citywide, where personnel was increased in fiscal year '18. So what is missing in this current pro forma is a recent decision to add another additional half-staff. So, but that will, as we go through the budget process, that will be updated in the proformas. And the capital equipment replacement plan is for the five-year plan. Six cent gas tax fund, it's a 1% estimated increase in the tax revenue. Contract revenues generally have a 2% increase every three years. It's usually a three-year contract. Expenditures are estimated at 1.2% increase overall per year. So there's some that we put up at 3%, but there were quite a few line items we held And the additional five cent gas tax fund, again, 1% estimated increase in the tax revenue, and the general fund transferring the 459,000 per year. So the paving plan expenditures are anywhere from 740 to 750,000 per year. Any questions on our pro formas? Okay, yes.
I'm looking at my 2018 tax bill, and it was 650 for sewal assessment for my 2018 bill.
But that was paid in, for the fiscal year '19.
Fiscal '19 budget.
Because our fiscal year is October 1 through September 30.
But it was paid with the 2018 taxes.
That we received in November, like, say you paid it in November, November of 2018, which is our fiscal year '19 budget. So in our fiscal year '18 budget, it was only 550 in our fiscal year '19 budget, because we know we're not-
So we pay taxes in arrears, that's why it's confusing.
Yes, that's why we budget for when we're going to receive them, not when, not the, not the calendar tax year that the appraiser uses.
The taxes you paid, the property taxes you paid in the November 2018 tax bill pays for the FY 2019 budget.
Correct.
That's not consistent with the way the tax bill is paid.
Right, because we've already had our expenditures for fiscal year '18. We can't go back and pay our fiscal year '18 expenditures. So we have to budget when, our revenues when they're coming in with our current expenditures.
Okay.
The tax year and the fiscal year are two different things. So, property taxes that, that we pay in November of 2018 go for the city or the county or the school districts FY 2019 budget year, fiscal year.
That's a new one on me, okay.
I have a question regarding the drainage, and it's not so much for Kristen, but it is, can, at some point, can we have an update from where we are? Because when we started this, a half a million dollar a year allocation-
We can do an update, sure.
That it was at that point in time, I think we had about identified maybe two and a half million dollars' worth of, of property, you know, of expenses that needed to be handled, and we've been at this now for a while, so that it gives us an idea of where we are.
We can do an update.
Yeah, we should be able to start gearing down a little bit, I would think.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. So I just want to, it'd be nice to see that. Gary?
Point, obviously, everybody here knows how I have felt about the drainage program from day one. I would just like to point out that the cost of the drainage program is also almost equivalent to what we dip into our reserves. And it started, when we almost made our reserve, the very next year when we had that dip was when we started the drainage program. I think that this has not been appropriate. I think we should have hired somebody for $100,000 a year to enforce the code instead, and I still feel that way. I feel that this has been an inappropriate program, and still is. And I've said my piece. I won't speak at the end of the meeting, but it's not right.
So moving on, we have our financial policies, and all the policies are in the plan that were online, but the only one we're bringing up here at council is our policy about increasing the extra half percent so that we can, if you approve that, we will move forward and make sure that that policy is updated to eight and a half percent for the unassigned fund balance minimum. Do y'all have any direction on that?
Everybody okay with moving forward?
At this point, at this point in time, we can always go back if something is changed later. But would you like us to continue working on the budget with that in mind?
I think so. It's what I have been receiving information from the residents as I presented the state of the city, that residents really want to see us continue to move in that direction.
Okay, thank you. Now we're moving into the budget issues. So again, we had built the budget on the three, maintaining the 3.1969 millage rate, so we wanted to just show various scenarios, not that any one of these would, it's just for discussion. So we have 500,000 use of reserves, and so it was lowered a little bit from the 512 because we know we have interest revenue coming in, so we said, okay, well, we can take care of that 12,000 as it's coming in a little bit better than when the pro forma was put into place. So continuing to have the 500,000, we could still maintain the 3.1969 using the reserves for the enhanced drainage services. If the enhanced drainage services were brought down to, say, 250,000 without using reserves, that would require, the effect on the millage rate would be approximately .08 increase. If you wanted the millage rate to cover those, again, the enhanced drainage services at 500,000, that increase would be .158.
I have a question.
Yes.
I can't help it. What would our millage rate be if we did not have the enhanced drainage services?
Um, so, I have to come up with that calculation. I'm so sorry, I don't have it handy here.
We'll just deduct it.
We do talk about using the-
How much are we paying, how much millage rate are we paying now for the enhanced drainage reserves?
Can you go back to that slide?
Go back to the slide.
Yeah, actually.
Just deduct it.
It's right there, yeah.
Just deduct it.
It's the 1.58, sorry.
Do the math, Gary.
Well, I'm just saying.
We could decrease it instead of going.
You're not coming from the same number, so if we, I just want to be clear, so if we were to not spend the half a million dollars, we could reduce our, our millage rate by .158. Is this what we're saying?
Approximately, yes.
Approximately, because it wouldn't be coming from the exact same number.
Yes.
And use reserves? Do you still want to use reserves?
Well, he's saying that you weren't doing the drainage.
No.
Oh, well, then that's a different story.
I just want to know what we're, what we're spending.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We always kind of bring back to you, well, what if we used a rollback rate, basically? So that's the discussion of effect of limiting the avalorum revenue only to the construction value increases. So if we were to retain the full value of the increase with existing and new construction, again, we can maintain the 3.1969. If you were to limit it to the new construction only, we would need to actually come up with $919,800, that's the 500,000 for the enhanced drainage services, plus the reduced revenue we would receive from avalorum, but your effect on the millage rate would be a decrease Other areas of consideration that could possibly help to reduce the shortfall, again, anywhere from 0 to 500 in the drainage program, reduction of Aqua Consulting contract and marketing costs, and again, it's a range depending on what services you would still want to retain. Could be anywhere from 0 to 81,000 on the contract and approximately 0 to 30,000 on marketing costs. To defer urban design comprehensive plan studies, so in fiscal year 2020, they currently have estimated a $65,000 for one of their studies. And then eliminate various programs in related staffing, and again, that would be determined by council based on what services you would want reduced or citizen input on services.
Bless you.
Any questions there? Items that are not currently included in our budget, because we either don't have the estimates or they haven't been approved yet, are the public safety bargaining union contracts. Those are still in negotiations, so that's not even included in the '19 numbers or future years beyond the 3% that was budgeted for all employees. Reconsideration of the fiscal year '19 staffing requests for the EMS training chief dispatcher, two community engagement officers, and a computer support specialist. Budget, general employee salary increases at 4%. That would be an estimate citywide of an additional 120,000, 121,000, and it would affect the general fund by 58,000 to do an extra percent.
That's just for the general?
General employees only. Excludes, um, the bargaining. City Hall refurbishment, so we currently have a study out for, so depending on those outcomes of the areas that would need to be addressed in City Hall, those amounts are not currently budgeted. Any priority projects that come out of the citywide master plan, along with any of the funding and timing depending on those projects that are asked, are not in here. The Fair Share Impact Fee Study, revenues from current and suspended impacts are currently being reviewed and we've brought to council, and again, that's just for helping to fund maybe certain projects. Website accessibility, upgrades of technology and conversion of documents posted to the website is a priority for the city.
Mm-hmm. We discussed this in our one-on-ones.
Yes.
Would you like to show what we immediately have done? To our website? This is like really recent? We've got a long way to go on this topic.
It's-
I don't want to dwell on it right now, but that last bullet, that's a biggie.
Yes, it is. Yes.
Do we, should we clarify this for the citizenship, what we're talking about?
Yeah, and, and we'll, our IT manager is going to show what we immediately have done. County, city, school districts, all public agencies have to make sure their website is ADA accessible. Much of it has to do with those who are, let's say, okay, see that little thing they just put up on the right?
Where?
Right there. Whoop.
That little, little person.
Brad just covered it up.
I just covered it up, I'm sorry, yes.
This little symbol on the right there?
There you go.
Okay.
Brad Schutte, IT manager for the city. In some of the reviews that we've been doing, we, this is a, as it's been said, is a large undertaking. There's, it'll be a continual effort to make sure that we maintain accessibility of everything that we put up for the public to consume. But one of the tools that we just identified that will, it's going to immediately impact our website is from a company called Userway, and we have it in testing on our, on our website right now. What it does is it allows a user, by clicking on the icon, to bring up a series of navigation assist tools that are commonly needed for those with disabilities to be able to overcome some of the design aspects of our, of our current website. A website is usually, is built to be navigated by a mouse. But with the difficulty that some people might have in using a mouse, one of the items it does is it allows you to, by clicking on this, turn the website into, the screen into one that's navigable. If you see the red box up there, you can move around, and it uses the keyboard instead of the mouse to navigate the site. Enlarge the cursor is another. I don't know why it's not doing it on this one, but what this does is it takes the cursor and makes it really big so that individuals will be able to see where they're pointing on the screen and use it. Contrast changes the color coding of the, of the site. There are three different aspects that it uses that address the wide variety of concerns there may be to make the site more readable, to make things stand out properly where it might normally be lost in a color scheme or lost in font colors that are used. Text enlargement, it allows them to immediately boost the text on the site up, up to four times, which is also something we had on our site. We have the ability here to change the font size as well, so it's something that was already on our site. Desaturate takes the site and turns it to a black and white so that any color issues that may exist can be immediately taken away. And this effect, this little dot shows up on every single page. So anywhere they go in our site, this would be available to use. Highlighting links allows them to see where there are links to other information. It makes those links stand out on the site so that they know that that area is something that they can click on to get to further information. Legible font, if you notice down here, fonts with serif and sometimes highlights on different fonts can make it hard to read. This takes and turns it into a very, just a straight sans serif font that makes it nice and easy to assimilate. And then finally, the read page, we don't have the speaker set up here. And we're, we're in the process of working with the vendor to improve the quality of this. But it actually takes and will read its way through the page to a person that's using it. If they click on a block of text, it will read that block of text to them and allow them to interact. It'll tell them whether it's a link or not and allow them to interact with it. So this is something that we've found is, is just an immediate step that we can make. The best news for this is that the tool is a free tool. The company that made this underway has developed this tool in the interests of accessibility and have made it available for use on sites such as ours. And so that's, that's one of the things that we've done to take an immediate improvement out of the gate.
Now, that's just to start. The major issues here are when we post things on our website, which we make a big effort to do that because that's how we communicate to our residents and visitors and businesses and whoever. Some of our attachments may not be ADA accessible. If you use a PDF, it's not ADA accessible. So we have a program, some of us can use what's called PDFA, or you can use HTML. I know we're getting technical now. But we have found that when we use PDFA and convert some of our documents to PDFA, errors appear, formatting, all kinds of different things happen where it's just not readable. So we're working on that as well. This is going to be a massive undertaking. And we're not, cities and counties, school districts, we're all being faced with this. We're not alone.
Do we have plans to establish a policy that then council can approve so that it can be posted? So that organizations know we are making our?
Yes, we have a draft, actually. Our urban design folks have put a draft together of a policy statement. We're reviewing it as we speak.
Okay, good.
There, there will be eventually an accessibility item right down here in the footer that will address, that will give, guide people to our, our accessibility statement, acknowledging that we make every effort possible. Our accessibility plan, which shows the, what are the things, the elements that we're working on. Because this goes beyond just the website as well. This is accessibility in walkways, buildings. It covers a very large amount, and we're working with a consultant that is helping us build that plan out. And that we'll be making that plan available and be able to build a, something to track the projects as we work them to improve that.
Yeah, Julie Ryan, Urban Design. As part of the ADA transition plan, council has adopted the city's ADA policy as it relates to communications and hiring practices and all of those types of items, as well as a grievance process and procedure. What we're then going to bring back as an additional part to that is the actual website policy, or website mission is what many municipalities are calling it. As the Department of Justice hasn't fully come down with exact guidelines or exact rulings, they only have guidelines. So that's why we will come back once all the people involved have looked at it to make sure that once we post that policy, that we're in a position today to make sure that we can adhere to those types of policies.
Great, thank you. Lynn?
With regard to part of what's on the website, the videos from prior meetings, I just saw on the news the other night that a local municipality is being challenged for not having closed captioning on their videos. Are we going to be doing that as well?
Currently YouTube does offer a closed captioning element to the videos that we've loaded up. It has some, some, it doesn't quite measure up in some instances. It does a good job for the most part, and it's an excellent first step. But as we review the revamping of the video services here in these chambers, closed captioning to be able to transcribe our videos will be part of that process.
Okay, thank you.
We have a ways to go.
Yes, we do. Yep.
So, that ends our initial budget issues discussion. We're not asking you to make any decisions today. However, we will be asking you to make decisions starting in April when we bring back to you what our initial FY 2020 departmental budget looks like. And we'll have that either the first or second meeting in April typically.
We had a couple more issues on other funds, but these were general fund and citywide. Did you want me to just go through them very quickly?
Sure, please.
There's not many. So, so for PGI, again, we already know about the $100 assessment. The RIPREP mitigation was delayed pending permitting. Again, we'll review the pro forma and costs each year because if they don't use their full annual spending on their normal maintenance, since we've just had this large project completed, we may be able to reduce that or stop it early. So we will continually look at that. And again, same thing for BSI. They didn't have an increase in their assessment, but we continually look at ways to reduce that or fund some of the projects that they're looking at. The utilities funds, the reverse osmosis plant construction. As I mentioned, the forecast included the 50% grant funding on that 32.2 up to the $40 million for the project. If the SWIFTMUD grant does not get increased, we would just move to our state revolving loan fund grant to cover that portion. And it was a 50/50 split, so 50 would still come, 50% would still come from the city. It would just be a different funding source. Subject to sewer, we presented the master plan. It was approved by council and utility advisory board and was asked to move into the financial plan phase for the areas one to three, and that's currently underway. So we don't know what the costs or the plan will look like exactly yet, but that will come back to you. Waste water treatment plant expansion, a study with alternatives again is underway with utilities, and they will present that to council. That will determine timing of when some of these expansion items are needed at the wastewater treatment plant. But having recognized that something was going to be needed to be done, utilities had already started putting money in their budget for this project. Currently in the five-year plan, it's 2.5 million, but depending on the timing, will either be moved up or later. Or again, and we would have to look at the funding sources for doing any of those alternatives. For sanitation fund, we have the 60 cent rate increase just for the recycling. However, as we saw in the pro forma, we could not purchase the next set of packers that were out in the future years. So we'll look at that to see if we need to possibly increase rates or try and change our plan somehow to accommodate that. And that is it.
Any more questions?
Not for right now.
Not for right now. I think that we'll have a lot of questions come April.
Thank you.
Lot of questions, but thank you. Okay. We can move on then to recommendations from city officers. City manager?
Nothing else.
Our city attorney?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay. City clerk?
Yes, just very briefly, under boards and committees. For our vacancies, we have a three-year term for an alternate on the Board of Zoning Appeals, an unexpired term for an alternate on the Building Board, and an unexpired term for an alternate on the Code Enforcement Board. Under nominations, I hope you all received my email about Mr. Mike Macadoncy. I think is how you pronounce his name, Macadonsky. That was my error, and I did not include his resume. I would like you to consider him for nomination along with the other three applicants for a regular seat for an unexpired term on the Code Enforcement Board.
Nominate all?
All four, thank you. I'll make sure his resume is in the agenda for appointments.
Okay, great.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Under policy and legislation, the only thing, the city, the state of the city presentations have been going really well. There was great participation yesterday at PGICA. Good questions afterwards. Thank you, Debbie, for being there. And Howard and I are presenting later this month at the Charlotte County Republican Club. I'm presenting next week at the Peace River Republican Women's Forum, the same. And then also, on the 22nd, I'm presenting to the Pontagorda Boat Club. And I just have one question, and that has to do with the draft bylaws for the pickleball committee. Not really bylaws, but whatever we're calling them. That we're stating in there that the applicants must live within the city limits.
Oh, yes. That's on the application itself.
Thank you. So that's all I have at the moment. And we'll start with council member comments. Jahah, we'll start over with you.
Just wanted to mention, there's going to be an event on February 16th at the American Legion Post 103. It's a fundraiser for the William R. Gaines Veterans Memorials Park. This is where Sunrise Park used to be on Edgewater. We're doing an event. I'm veteran fundraising chair. This, this is a park. The county's already put in $2 million. This is to honor veterans and first responders. And so we're doing an event just to invite the community out for that because we want to try to get this park fully funded and up within the next three years. So that's going to be on Saturday the 16th at 3:00 PM.
Just one quick request with regard to the weekly report. Believe it or not, I had somebody ask me, we had in the report two weeks in a row, what percentage of the force main was done? And last week, we didn't have that percentage in. Could you please make sure that that gets put in for the rest of the project? As well as, is it possible to put a percentage of how much has been accomplished on the RO plant? Is that possible? If it isn't, that's fine.
I don't know about that. That I don't know.
I get them all, I'll tell you. This week I was blasted with emails.
We just know that it is currently being reported that will be completed in May of 2020, which is just not that far away.
It's just somebody asked me if we could tell, if we could determine what percentage of the project was completed so far.
I don't know, I don't know.
That's going to be very difficult.
Don't shoot the messenger, I'm just relaying what I was asked. That's all I have.
The plant can actually come up and be operating before it's 100% complete.
But people do pay attention to these percentages, they do know.
Once you give them that information, don't stop giving it to them because they go crazy. Anyway, that's all I have.
It's okay. I'm really glad our residents are paying attention.
Yeah.
I'm closing my computer now.
And that means?
Means?
That's what I had to say.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I have something to say, and that is that I attended the EMO in Jacksonville, and I want to thank the city for making that available to me. Because, you know, even though I sat through, it seemed like 72 weeks of sitting and listening to stuff, the interpersonal connections that I made were absolutely fascinating. I was speaking with people that their millage rate is already at 10%, they can't go any higher. And they were astounded at the services that we, as a city, are providing our citizens without extra fees and at our low millage rate. I mean, you know, they, we, I was like a rock star to these people. They just could not believe it. And the second thing is, there were people there who are actually shutting down their websites because they had no idea how to become ADA compliant. And, you know, I thought I was going to come in and tell Howard, be careful, there's a guy out there trying to shut cities down. And to find out that we are so far ahead of the curve is just gratifying. It just reinforces my belief that this is the most wonderful place to live. Thank you very much for sending me.
Okay, thank you. I think Lynn has something else.
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention one thing. The new website that was set up, Explore Pontagorda, is not, it's not syncing with mobile devices. It's not, you can't access pages within that website. And I've had three people now tell me that. So if we could do something about that, that would be very helpful. Sorry, that's all I have, thank you.
And the, the other thing is, we've been adding to the conversation that the new pontagordamasterplan.com website is up. I know it was only weekly. If we can continue to post that, that's where people can go register to get the master plan. It's helpful, so.
Under what's new, I mean latest news.
Okay, okay. Time for citizens' comments. On any, anything that's on your mind.
Patton Iles Gateway Point, I appreciate this time to be able to come up here. I went over, I took the challenge from the, that was brought up at the last city council meeting about the strategic plan and for Pontagorda. And I did go on the website, and I got a copy of the fiscal year 2019 January progress report. And I made my own copy to it. All I'm just suggesting here is, reading it over, there's, it, there was an awful lot, you can tell, of time and effort that was put into this document. And it's like a triptych. If you belong to AAA and you're a snowbird, you go and get a new one every so often anyway because you want to know about the construction that's going on. Well, that's really what you get out of this. It's 22 pages long, this particular one, and it's an effort to make a copy of it. I'm suggesting that, along with the agenda, that you have copies of this so that when people that are new that come, if you really just take some time, or if you're going to participate in the charades, and all of you who show up here all the time, this really gives us real sense. gives us real sound summary and the ground rules of what's going on, and if you're going to be in, do a charrette and, and go to one of those, I'm signed up, you'll be able to, if you do this first and, and take a look at this, and maybe jot down the questions you're going to ask, you start talking to the people next to you, and they start also coming up with ideas, and you're, right now you only have one charrette, so get it right whenever questions you're going to do. So I just suggest, read this, it'll trigger your ideas of expanding maybe some of the questions that you have for as we progress through this journey. But sincerely, thank you for this, and I hope you put some over for, for the rest of us.
Thank you, Pat.
Good day, everybody, Bob Sederich, no complaints. I just wanted to ask that maybe one other thing be added to the pickleball application, and that is that they're not a snowbird leaving, that if they're going to be an applicant, they are here for that ninety-day or whatever period you seem fit, but they're here, not that, well, I'm here in March, but I'm going to be gone in April, and I'll be back in August, and, because then we're just having different people missing all the time. So that was just a comment I think should go on the application to make sure they're going to be here to serve.
Thank you, that's a good suggestion.
Martha Barretta, Historic District. First off, found the discussion about the monies and wanting to save money very interesting. We are spending, I think it's about three million dollars for a second of the population. Therefore, I think that for the few dollars that will be spent for the way finding signs, I think there should be no problem. Those serve the entire city and will be very important as we go into our centennial. Very happy to hear that you're probably exempt the church, again, in looking forward and looking at the entire city. I'm familiar with what that church does. Them having to pay would definitely hurt their programs, and citizens of this community would not be served, so I hope that you will consider that. Now finally, pickleball, I have to say, as a citizen of Pontagorda who depends upon you all to make decisions, that I am a little disappointed that the council just didn't make a decision about pickleball. It's, it's, they're just, there's a choice, it's, we've got human suffering and we've got recreational play, and, but I am happy to see that you're going to have a committee and that you're not making this a year-long or longer process, because I think a decision needs to be made. One of the things that I hope that's when the criteria is set up for the committees, is that it not be placed in a residential area. I think that should be an option, it is not in a residential area. And I think that is the bottom line, that nobody in any of the districts wants pickleball in their area. And I don't know who owns the lot, but the You Save lot is there, if the city could buy that. There are no houses around it, they could play to their heart's content, and no residents in any area would be bothered, so please just consider having empathy for our residents. Many of the people who came that Christmas time didn't even live here in the city, so if you just have compassion and empathy for our residents, and they are suffering now, and the faster we can take care of this, I think the better.
Thank you. All right, well, then I guess getting adjourned, thank you.